Focus on crashes as they relate to our most vulnerable road users, our pedestrians and our bicyclists. I currently sit as the pedestrian and bicycle representative to KCAT, which is a technical advisory board to our metropolitan planning organization. I'm also the North Idaho representative to what is known as BPAC, which is an advisory committee to the Idaho Transportation Department's pedestrian and bicycle program. While with the Coeur d'Alene Police Department's Action Reduction Team, I was brought on and assigned to what was known as District One. This district would historically have the highest injury accident ratings and include some of the city's most dangerous intersections. The crash data revealed that car versus car crashes were most often occurring at or near major intersecting points that had high speeds with high volumes of motor vehicle traffic. It was my assignment and responsibility to reduce these injury crash numbers within this district, and much of my focus was on these major intersections and the behavior of the motor vehicle traffic that used them. It was during this time period with the action reduction team that I started my journey in discovering how to investigate and analyze crashes, crash data, human behavior and roadway design as it related to the street system and the reduction of injury crash numbers. By studying this crash data and behavior trends, it was only then that we could effectively begin to develop patrol plans and countermeasures to address these crashes. Shifting now our focus and attention to car versus bike crashes, it was interesting to discover that car versus bike crashes are unique and that they do not necessarily require a major intersecting point as did our car versus car crashes. There just seems to be two necessary components in order to create the perfect environment for our most common car versus bike crash scenario. One, a roadway that produces stress and discomfort for the bicyclists in the street; and two, a sidewalk or shared-use path that has intersecting points with private driveways and side streets. The leading cause of car versus bike crashes is associated with bicyclists riding on the sidewalk. To be even more specific, a bicyclist salmon-riding or riding in the opposite direction of the motor vehicle traffic in the adjacent street is at greatest risk of being struck by a motor vehicle driver leaving a private driveway or side street. As we begin to observe actual roadways that have been the site of a car versus bike crash, this consistent environment begins to emerge, again noting the type of roadway and the stress producers that create sidewalk riding, high traffic volume and high vehicle speed. Trip generators such as schools added to the high-volume, high-speed roadway can actually increase the risk of crash or conflict, especially with juvenile or minor bicyclists commuting to school. This is why streets servicing our schools should be at the top of our list of streets to evaluate for stress. Pictured here Kathleen and Jasmine in Coeur d'Alene, the scene of a car versus bike crash involving a young charter school student salmon-riding on the sidewalk or shared-use path. It should also be noted that just because of a bicycle facility or bike lane is present doesn't automatically mean that the stress of a street has been sufficiently reduced. The specific type of bike lane becomes a critical factor in how the stress level of the street is reduced. This places great emphasis on the data collection before and after bicycle facilities are installed to ensure that the roadway is producing the desired effects. Post Falls has a very unique and interesting situation when it comes to car versus bike crashes. The majority of the known crashes reported in Post Falls involve minor children. This was also apparent in 2015. This picture highlights one of those crash scenes where a juvenile was involved. Again, this is showing a high-speed, high-volume roadway combined with a sidewalk or shared-use path. Another interesting note, just because a shared-use path is used doesn't make it immune from the same dangers that a sidewalk produces. As long as the shared-use path intersects with private driveways and side streets, it will operate the same as a sidewalk and have the same hidden dangers. Spokane Street and 10th Avenue here in Post Falls, again, high-volume, high-speed motor vehicle traffic creates stress to the vulnerable street user. Incorporate trip generators such as a school, and we create the perfect environment to produce juvenile riding their bikes on sidewalks. In this particular case, a young boy was salmon-riding along the west sidewalk of Spokane Street and went to cross the intersection with 10th Avenue. The motor vehicle driver was on 10th Avenue, awaiting to turn right or southbound onto Spokane Street. The motor vehicle driver's attention was looking to the left, awaiting to turn right, and not expecting the bicyclist to be on the sidewalk coming from the right. At this particular location on Seltice, a young juvenile boy was salmon-riding his bike on the sidewalk, on the way to get a haircut, and was struck by a motor vehicle leaving the animal hospital. Again, noting the roadway types, high-volume, high-speed, no-in-street bike facility equals a stressful street that produces the perfect environment to create sidewalk riding. Much like the canary in the coal mine, people are the indicator species of the street system. I make a religious effort to speak with as many of the bicyclists that are struck by motor vehicles to better understand their behavior. It's not uncommon to learn that the reason that they ride on the sidewalk is because the street scares them or makes them feel uncomfortable. When bicyclists are present, their behavior, or how they ride, can be a key indicator to the environment or the stress level of the particular street. I'm not sure if you can see him there on the left, but that's what is also known as a salmon rider, he's going the wrong direction. Combine a high-volume, high-speed roadway with no-in-street bike facility, and we drastically increase the likelihood of sidewalk riding, inadvertently placing the bicyclist in the ideal location to be struck by a motor vehicle. These high-speed, high-volume roadways are where sidewalk riding can be found. So the question becomes, how do we design an efficient street that will produce a comfortable, low-stress environment for the vulnerable road users while still achieving the mobility needs of a community? This is an extremely important topic that requires much more than we have this time this evening for. I hope this will at least produce an opportunity to begin to address this issue, especially in this situation that seems to be endangering the youth of our community. If I could leave you with one thought or suggestion, there is a science behind the design and creation of low-stress streets. This is not a new topic. I recently attended a class in Boise where I met and listened to Dr. Michael Lowery from the University of Idaho. Dr. Lowery holds a joint appointment in civil engineering and bioregional planning at the University of Idaho. He's an affiliate researcher for the National Institute for Advanced Transportation Technology. His research focuses on capital investment, decision-making, and transportation planning for bicyclists and pedestrians. Dr. Lowery teaches courses related to sustainable transportation, engineering statistics, and economic analysis. He received his PhD in civil and environmental engineering from the University of Washington and BS and MS from Brigham Young University. Dr. Lowery has done some incredible research and studies to create a low-stress street system. Pictured here is a chart that recommends a specific bicycle facility that would appeal to the majority of the population based on two things: one, the average daily volume or the vehicles per day; and two, the posted speed limit. If our local communities were simply to begin to incorporate this method to aid in the identification of the appropriate bicycle facility, this alone could be a critical piece that could help us begin to turn our rising car versus bike crash numbers around. Bicyclists ride on the sidewalk seeking protection and safety from the motor vehicle traffic. If we begin to create a street system that provides protection and safety, the percentage of sidewalk riding will be reduced and hopefully eliminated. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Appreciate the time and effort you put into this. I know we've met on a couple of occasions, and I know you're passionate about it, so thanks for sharing your concerns and thoughts on that topic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Shelley, you've probably got the next 15 minutes to read the consent calendar because it's as long as we've ever seen, so please.
Item A is minutes from the April 16, 2016 city council meeting. Item B is payables, August 9 through August 29, 2016. Item C is frontage improvement waiver request for 108 North Post Street. Item D is Expo at Post Falls Zone Change Findings of Fact and Conclusions. Item E is T2O subdivision Findings of Fact and Conclusions. Item F is Prairie Falls Spokane Street Subdivision Master Development Agreement Addendum Number Three. Item G is Prairie Falls Idaho Road Subdivision Master Development Agreement Addendum Number Three. Item H is Ashton Villas Construction Improvement Agreement. Item I is North Place Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item J is Expo Eighth Edition Subdivision Findings of Fact and Conclusion. Item K is amended grant and agreement relocating easement for property at Fourth and Spokane Street. Item L is North Place Phase One Final Planned Unit Development Supplemental Agreement. Item M is Whiskey Flat Subdivision Plot Application. Item N is Highway 41 and Prairie Sewer Extension Construction Agreement. Item O is Young Annexation Findings of Fact and Conclusion. Item P is Planning Services Agreement with Studio Cascade for the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Update. Item Q is Jacklin Lift Station Upgrade Request to Go Out for Bid. Item R is Tolomor Phase Two C Final Planned Unit Development Supplemental Agreement. And item S is T2O Subdivision Master Development Agreement.
Are there any questions, Shelley? Joe.
We have a question on item Q, the Jacklin Lift Station upgrade, and we're talking about 1.3-plus million dollars here for an obsolete lift station. I think it'd probably be beneficial for us and the viewing public, we get explanation of why that's not workable or upgradable or has to be completely replaced.
John or Russ? Looks like John Beecham is going to come up and answer that.
Thanks for the question, John Beecham, Environmental Manager. The existing lift station is much, much smaller than what is projected for that area, on the order of 10 times smaller. So it's not only 20 years old, but it's also in need of a major capacity upgrade. And with the size of the capacity upgrade, and this being a lift station that collects flow from multiple other lift stations, we'll put in overflow storage. What that does is if there's a power failure or a pump failure, we have somewhere for the wastewater to go. This lift station is right down by the river, so if we were to have an overflow, that's the direction it would go. So it's a substantial upgrade, I guess is the short answer to your question.
But it's also serving other areas secondarily by being a transfer.
That's correct.
Okay, so that makes sense to me.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Al.
I was hoping you might be able to expand a little bit on item P, the comprehensive plan. Is this the same organization that we used when we set up the SMART code?
No, this is a new organization. They went through an RFP process, approved, and Russ can probably speak to the timeline.
If you wouldn't mind, it's a lot of money. Not as much as a lift station, but...
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Russ Canol, Public Services Director. This project has been in the works for a few months. We've gone through an RFP, RFQ process, actually, to find a highly qualified firm for this. We've heard from city council in months past that we'd like to see the zoning codes, the two zoning codes that we currently have, the SMART code and the standard zoning code combined into one. We've had, it's no secret, we've had some issues with the SMART code process, and we've been directed not only by council but also input from the development community to try to fix this situation. And so this is our direction to do that. This project is proposed to take place over about 13 months, roughly, once this is initiated, and will be tremendous amount of public process and input from the community. We'll have workshops with council and the planning commission as well. And so this is the beginning of a little over year-long process to find a zoning code that works, that makes sense for Post Falls, and to kind of get rid of this whole two separate codes where we have lots of confusion and problems with our development community especially, so.
Great. Thanks, Russ.
I have a couple stupid related questions. Has Studio Cascade actually done this type of thing before, or is this going to be new to them?
They have. This is a very well-qualified firm. We interviewed for this, with different consultants for this project. They rose to the top very quickly. They're very well-qualified. They have an excellent code writer on staff that we were very impressed with, and their scope of their capabilities should serve us well.
And I'm assuming we don't have anybody currently on staff with those unique capabilities that could do it themselves, is that correct?
That's correct. We do have our associate planner, John Manley. He's very, he's well-educated, has a master's degree, he's very good at planning, he's also a mechanical engineer, he's very well-inclined. We just don't have the time, and we don't have the expertise that Studio Cascade has. So not only is it a time issue, it's also an expertise, you know, the level of expertise that we're hiring here is much greater than what we have on staff with one person.
And I certainly wasn't implying anything negative about Mr. Manley, but just more for the viewing public of why we're bringing in a third party on this. So I made the assumption, but wanted to make it clear.
Good question.
Just to follow up on that, the cost of this, I mean, we're talking about doing this like every five years. I know it's been, well, it'll be seven, I guess, by the time we get this done. Would it make sense to, would it make sense to have somebody on staff that would keep this comprehensive plan up to date, I mean, consistently, and we wouldn't have to go out every five years or so?
Yes, it would. We are lacking currently a long-range planner in our planning division. It's something that Shelley and I, and we've been discussing for some time, too. So we do, we are missing the long-range planner that can handle some of these aspects, and especially when we talk about the five-year updates, that's typically just the comprehensive plan. The zoning code, once we get the zoning code in place, there'll be, there may be minor amendments, there usually always is over time, but that document in its essence and its base should function for quite some time, for many years, we hope.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's a lion's share of this project, correct?
That's correct. That is the lion's share, correct.
And you may recall it took how many years to develop and implement the SMART code only to find out?
I believe three.
Is in fact not the greatest thing since sliced bread, so this is going to be a big effort to consolidate.
A big effort. Yeah. Thanks, Russ. We hope it'll benefit the community greatly, so.
Appreciate the explanation, Russ. Any other comments? Good questions, guys. Noted, entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second. Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Orders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. The next item on the agenda is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone cares to address council, come forth. Seeing none. New business, we have none. Next items are ordinances and resolutions. We have two ordinances. The first is the Expo at Post Falls Zone Change.
Move to place the ordinance, file number ZC-16-01, Expo at Post Falls Zone Change on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance, from 155 acres of industrially-zoned property to 70 acres of community commercial services and 45 acres single-family residential R1, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded, and providing an effective date.
To approve the ordinance Expo at Post Falls Zone Change, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussions? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next ordinance is fiscal year 2017 budget.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2017 budget on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance entitled the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2016, appropriating the sum of $52,845,056 to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of Post Falls for said fiscal year, and establishing kinds and levels for established positions authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the object and purposes for which said appropriations are made.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal budget 2017 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next ordinance is fiscal year 2017 budget. Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2017 budget on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance entitled the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2016, appropriating the sum of $52,845,056 to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of Post Falls for said fiscal year, and establishing kinds and levels for established positions authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the object and purposes for which said appropriations are made.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal budget 2017 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is fiscal year 2017 budget. Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2017 budget on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up. Or, I was almost going to skip some. Update on crosswalks on Seltice. Russ Canol.
Director. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update on this, on the crosswalks on We've heard public comment a couple of different times over the last month or so in regards to crosswalks. We did just complete a chip seal project on this section of Seltice, and between last meeting and now, we have finished the crosswalks associated with that project. We've added, we've made a couple of changes to this. You'll see that the crosswalks are fully striped all the way across. The signage clearly indicates the location, and this is the eastbound lane on Seltice, and this is the westbound lane. So you see that the crosswalks line up clearly with the ramps associated with the sidewalk, and we've had positive feedback from these crosswalks, or from the community, excuse me, regarding these crosswalks since they've been painted in. We've also added onto the, these are the crosswalk warning signs, or the indicator signs that there's a crosswalk forthcoming. We've also added the crosswalk ahead signs here. And I think what may have been happening is some people in the community may have been misinterpreting the crosswalk ahead sign, because it just had the symbol of the person as this being a place where they could safely cross the street. like to try to, you know, bring, bring bike lanes onto some of these busier streets to try to calm that traffic and provide for safer, safer routes for cyclists in the future, so.
I've had comments twice over the last week. A gentleman said he'd be happy to chair a Citizens Committee in order to figure out how to put medians and turn lanes and bike lanes and everything down Seltis Way. And he would like to do it at no public cost. So it'd be privately funded, so it'd be, I'll give you his name and you can visit with him.
That'd be great, yeah.
It would be nice to be able to see the improvements made.
Very good, we would too.
Any other questions, Russ?
Yeah.
Russ, have you ever done something, this is a perfect example, I think, where if a person was wanting to cross that street, if they were standing safely, they'd be standing by the red car. Right?
Close to the red car, yes. They'd be on the, on the curb line.
Yeah, the, the reality is, though, is cars driving down the street aren't going to see somebody standing that far back from the edge of the street. You know, that's where the flashing lights would come in handy. I'm just curious, have you ever done any, like, unscientific study where you've just put a guy standing there and just to see if cars would react to him at all, or?
No, we haven't, we haven't. We can, we can take a harder look at that, though, and get some of our people out there and kind of see what the thoughts are, whether the, in this, in this case, where, where you have the vision heading westbound, and people there, the traffic, the closest traffic will be heading westbound, so you'll be able to see across that intersection. But you're right, you'd have to be standing in the street likely before somebody would stop. You know, there's some, some cities of, they provide flags on those crosswalks where you can grab a flag and walk across. That has mixed results as well. It's, it's a busy road, so the biggest, one of the biggest improvements I think we could make would be to calm that traffic a little bit, provide some bike lanes, possibly look at a speed reduction to 30 miles an hour. It's 35 now, people drive that, maybe a little bit more. And those things make for a challenging pedestrian crossing, as well as a challenging cycling experience on these roads, so.
Well, if you calm the traffic and slow the traffic, we will hear about it.
We'll hear about that, too.
We've heard a lot about the slow traffic on Spokane Street, so.
Yeah, there's, there's issues both ways.
Probably still the way to go, though. Linda?
Yeah.
I have a comment to that comment. I travel that road probably at, at a minimum six times a day where the flashing light is. And, yeah, the traffic is slow there. I have seen a couple of times where the driver paid no attention to the flashing light, but I have seen dozens and dozens and dozens of times where they have stopped for the person, so. You know, I guess just...
They work, that's my experience, too. I think, I think primarily they do work. I think with the two crosswalks we have on this section of Seltis, I don't think it would make sense to put flashing lights on both of them. Because you're gonna be stopping too much, and then people would tend to, to drive through them, because they would get tired of stopping. One of them, I think, would make some level of sense in this, on this street, because it's busy. You know, and you have people salmon riding, you know, they're riding their bikes on the wrong side of the street. Part of that is because they don't feel safe crossing the street to get to the right side of the street, where you have potential for less driver-cyclist conflict, so. It's something that, you know, obviously, there's gonna be some money involved, and it's something we can look into.
Preston will probably punch me for bringing this up, but the trees on the north side do present pretty significant visibility issues. Has that been discussed at all, or?
I believe they're outside of the technical clear vision triangle for the intersection, especially when you're looking at traffic hitting west. There, we, they are outside of the clear vision, we did, we did take a look at that. But that's a good question. From this picture, you would not know that unless you were standing out there, whether or not there was a visibility issue.
I've just been thinking of it a couple of times as a motorcyclist, either exiting a driveway from that side and trying to go, or passing when somebody else is exiting a driveway. Those trees is kind of looking left up that way, they don't, they don't see you coming.
It's challenging, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, they're...
You're welcome. Thanks, thanks for the information. Rob, Bill, thank you guys for the work you've done on this as well. Urban renewal workshop discussion.
Good evening. Jerry Boltzell, and actually Lynn Borders, the mayor and I, and Lynn Crosby met today and talked about the potential workshop with the Urban Rural Commission. We had originally looked at the workshop for the council at 5:00 on the second meeting in September, and the commission has requested if they could have that moved to October 12th to their workshop, which is at 8:00 a.m., which is a Wednesday morning, that that would work better for them as far as timing to get all the information together. We could also, Shannon, do we have anything in October already for?
Not yet.
So we could also use the city's 5:00 workshop in October to allow them more time. The topic that they were really looking at, and one of the big things that Jerry brought up, and here he had me put, what is, what's the city trying to achieve? Today he asked, what are the top three goals for the city? The commission really wants to support the city and help them with their goals for the community overall, and so they would like to know what the top three goals. And I know we talked about, you know, the landings down here being like one of the goals for the city, to see that develop correctly. And so that's, that's kind of when you go to meet with them, one of the things they're looking at from City Council is, what is the goals of City Council? And how can they, within the current districts that they have, help support those goals? And so those are the topics. And we think it's good to really, once every six months, have the commission and council get together and just have a communication about current districts that are open, what's going on in those districts, any future districts that, that might be out there. Some of the times, someone looking at opening a district or wanting a district may come to the city first, or they may come to the agency first. So just making sure that those conversations happen. I was wondering on timing, what works better for the council?
So did you say that one of them could be at the 5:00 workshop, or before?
The Octobers, yeah, second meeting in October at that 5:00. And we were talking about moving, I know, Joe, it's hard for you, about moving it to 4:30. The concern that the commission had is trying to keep that to 45 minutes is difficult to have a conversation.
I will say that 4:30 in the afternoon is better than 8:00 in the morning.
Okay.
Well, that was the other choice, yeah.
And they did also offer to move to 7:00 or 7:30 that October 12th meeting, too, if that works better. I'm not sure on timing if that does for everyone or not.
Either one works for me.
Yeah, I can do either one.
For me, those would be a better push. I want to do 7:00 or 4:30.
Okay.
Workshop.
Workshop, yeah. Reference on, I guess if we were up to me, I, I know they don't want to cut short a discussion, my thought is if we had to go back-to-back workshops on, you know, from, instead of the third, go the third and the first, we could do it that way. Or if we can move it up a half hour, I know that makes it difficult for Joe, but...
And maybe we could do this one at the City Council's second meeting in October at 4:30, and then do the next one at the Urban Renewal Workshop to kind of share, if that works.
If we move it up to 4:30, would that work?
I can make it work.
Mayor, can't, can't, can't somebody tape it for the part that Joe's calling, for him?
We could, yeah.
So that then you could just catch up on it the next morning or something?
Mayor, I'll, I'll do my best, since it's all kind of a one-time thing, I'll, I'll see if I can sneak out where nobody sees me moving out the back door.
But if not, somebody here must have a tape recorder.
The other thing, Linda, is we could get good information, good minutes, and then sit down with Joe afterwards, so.
Sure, yeah. Either, yeah, we can do either one, we can tape it or, or provide the minutes, whichever is better.
The chief can give him a police escort.
Come and cuff me, they'll think it's official then.
Yes, so I'll get back with Jerry and the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor comments. We've been notified, I received a notification, that mailing is going out to city residents regarding water and sewer line maintenance insurance. This is not a company that's affiliated with the city, and the city does not endorse them. The city does not require homeowners to have insurance covering water line maintenance. Also, there's an article in the paper today about Jessica Workman's difficulties navigating a broken sidewalk in Pulse Falls in her wheelchair. And she stated that the street is one she uses to reach grocery store and other businesses, and she recently moved to Pulse Falls. Workman and Disability Action Center contacted the city, and within two weeks, the city had the sidewalks repaired. In the article, Michelle Porter of the Disability Action Center and Workman praised the city for quick response. Workman is now working with the city on other accessibility projects in the city, and I want to thank Rob Paulus, I know Rob Bubin involved, Bill Melvin, Shannon, you know, we hear, we, we've got a party that is continually bringing ADA, what they view as ADA failings to the city's attention. And I know the city works very hard to correct anything and to make sure that everything we do at this point is ADA accessible. And I think this is, this is good reinforcement of the efforts that you guys especially are making, so thank you very much. And it's nice to hear someone say they moved from another city to ours and are very impressed with the service and the response time, so thank you very much. Also, today's the first day of school. I understand, I've, I've heard from a couple of people that there was a fatality not involving a pedestrian, but first grader. Please drive careful, kids are out in the street, kids are excited, they don't pay a lot of attention to cars. It's up to us as drivers to pay attention to them, so please be safe. One other thing I want to update council on is, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting regarding streetlights versus taxes. We have not dropped the ball on that. I've reached out to a couple of our legislators. One of the homeowners that was present that night has reached out to legislators he wanted to contact. I know there is work being done, there is investigations being done as to what choices, what other options may be available. If this is something that comes down to needing legislative action, it will not occur. I think the chances of it, something occurring this legislative session are slim to none, but I want you all to know, and I want the citizens who raise the issues to know, and I've reached out and touched base with one of them, that it's not something that we're just dropping and that, that we're going to give up on. We don't know what the opportunities are, we don't know what the options are, but we also know that we don't want to be sued, so we'll make the change now, and if, if we have the opportunity, once we get this information back through legislative action or whatever, to change it back, we will make it as, as fair as we can, so. Please be assured that we're continuing to work on that, we'll keep you updated. Anything else to add on that one? Council comments. Linda?
First of all, I would like to thank you for that, Mayor. I appreciate the work that you're doing on the streetlight situation. That's kind of bothersome to all of us, I think. My second thing is, I had a citizen talk to me about pulling off the freeway exit and going south on Spokane Street on the west side of the road. The trees growing there, they can't see the speedlight sign. So if somebody can, maybe Russ can look into that or something. That's all I have. Thanks.
No, I'm good. I was just trying to figure out which way she was going.
Yeah, we were getting off the freeway and trying to figure out the signs. No, but I did have, I wanted to thank the street department, because I love roundabouts, and I do use the roundabouts on Pole Line. And the Idaho Street roundabout had a, has a two-lane into the roundabout, one to continue on the roundabout, and one is a right turn only to go east on Pole Line. And I noticed in the last, is it week or two, or less, the dividers in there? That is just, that's perfect, because I've been, I've been frightened more than once, and actually stopped in the roundabout because I didn't think the person on the outside edge really had gotten the memo that they had to turn right. So those are wonderful. It'd be a real challenge, especially for somebody on a motorcycle, as my husband also pointed out, to make an error in judgment there. So it's too bad that people can't just pay attention to the signs and all of that, but that is wonderful, and I noticed it, noticed it right away.
That's in relation to a citizen who came to us and said, "We find this dangerous." He lives up there. And so our street department, our Public Services Department got together, because the issue with just putting up those dividers is snow plowing and a number of other things, and the maintenance and ongoing costs of those getting broken off. And so they came up with this plan, Jim Porter worked really hard on it, and almost immediately we got a comment back, which I wish I would have brought for the mayor to read, from that citizen thanking the city.
Well, I've been thinking it for about a week, but I waited until now, so I could thank you for it. Yeah, it's great, it was a great solution, and, yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, and what else?
Could we just ask Russ to give us an update on the streetlight situation on Spokane Street in the middle of the new renovation area where they aren't working now? What's happened in there?
Were you brought up to speed on that today?
I sent you an email this morning.
Well, let's let Shelley address it, then.
I was gonna say, yeah, Jim Porter got back to me and they were working on it, but we don't know what's going on right now. The lights from the railroad tracks to Second Avenue are out. These are the same lights that we seem to have continual issues with. They are under warranty, so it's on, it will be on the provider to fix those lights and get them repaired. So we are in contact with them.
And they've already fixed them at least once, and apparently an electronic part had to be flown in from Canada?
There was an electronic part, and then there was also an issue with Avista at one point, where the lights were literally just turned off, but we know it's not that this time, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Lynn, I want to thank you, because I know when we sit down in meetings, you drive that lot and you pay attention, so I appreciate it, because I don't get down there that often, so thank you very much.
And I would also like to thank Mr. Canol for being willing to answer a question that I could tell he didn't really readily have the answer to. But he was gonna take one for the team.
I was trying to help you, Russ. I, I heard the question this morning, so. We do need an executive session, correct?
Yes.
How long?
Yeah, it's over. 15 minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to the Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken, the session will last about 15 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Chairman Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll adjourn to executive session.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, we'll adjourn to executive session.[1066.15]